All right, we can get started.
First, I would like to call the October 26th meeting to order. In our agenda is the, or excuse me, in our packet is the agenda and the meeting minutes. Are there any comments or suggestions or suggestions for changes for those?
Rita, don't you have to actually call to order and take attendance?
Oh, thank you, Virgil. All right, let's back up, I will call this meeting to order, and Vanessa, would you like to take attendance?
I will, thank you, I was giving you one extra more minute. Commissioner Weaver.
Here.
Commissioner Pitt.
Here.
Commissioner Veerling. Commissioner Schmidt.
Here.
Commissioner Phil.
Here.
And Commissioner Shea.
Here.
And Commissioner Cassillius is not with us today.
Okay, now I think we can move on to the agenda and meeting minutes from last month. Does anyone have any comments or additions or changes? And if not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
This is Commissioner Shea, I'll make motion to approve the minutes. The agenda and the meeting minutes from our August 24th meeting.
Commissioner Pitt, would you like to second Commissioner Shea's recommendation?
Yes, I'll second Commissioner Shea's.
Great, I will do roll then, Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Veerling.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Shea.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, passed, let's move on to staff reports, Troy with Scott SWCD report.
I'll just quickly review a few items from the report. That's in your packets for October 2020. The technical assistance and cost share request graph, you see there, we're hovering around 250 active requests for conservation assistance. The blue line indicates that portion that is in the Scott WMO, both for the number of requests and well as the number of projects. Soil health, we collected soil samples on our couple of different sites. We're taking those samples to determine, before planting, determine the nutrient saving of the cover crop. The particular crops that were seeded there are intended to hold on to the nutrients rather than have them leave through leaching or to runoff so that they're available for next year's crops, so we're doing some testing on that. We do our social media posts regularly as well as our regular cover crop updates, hopefully you're all on the receiving end of those. If you're not, please do let me know and we'll get you added to the list. Clean Water Education Program, we had a number of articles, as you've probably already seen, in the scene edition. We had our tour last month, as you all are aware, and we recognized our Conservationist of the Year for Scott County. Inventory and assessment, we finished, had finished the Cleary Lake subwaterset assessment study, and then again, that, just to remind everybody that that assessment is used to identify priority sources or locations of sources of non-point pollution, phosphorus and sediment included, and identifies priority practices and locations of those practices so that we can target our efforts within any given watershed. We finished up the Cleary Lake report earlier this year, but there was some revisions to the mapping and modeling software that we use, so we're just rerunning some numbers and putting on some new maps so they're consistent with the current protocols. And we're on our way to starting the next subwatersheds, so in addition to Cleary, we had finished up Thole Lake, and now we're going to head down to Roberts Creek, which resides portions of Blakely, Belle Plaine Township, just south of the city of Belle Plaine. I'll move through to the next page, skip over some zoning, livestock, water quality monitoring, so we did our bi-leak sampling on Pinky Creek watershed. Rainfall monitoring, you see for the month of September, we're significantly less than normal, this is at the Jordan Station. So we track this through our volunteer rainfall monitoring program, this is just one site out of 13 scattered throughout the county. And just as a reminder, we use this data, it's actually part of the DNR's program, volunteer program, and this data gets recorded and logged in a state database, and that information is used to calculate what our precipitation trends are. And over time, that's used to update modeling software and rainfall curves. Construction erosion control, you see September was a pretty busy month in terms of inspections. And also, we're still seeing a pretty steady, high volume of new plan reviews, those are applications for accessory structures or new houses at commercial sites. Moving down to buffer law, we continue to work on our annual compliance, so we do one-third of the parcels or one-third of the area of the county every year. We're working in the southwest part of the county, which is Blakely, Belle Plaine, Helena, St. Lawrence Township areas, part of Sand Creek, and just doing our annual compliance inspections. We found a couple of buffers that were missing, but we're working with those landowners to see what's going on and to get them back in. But I'd say 99% are looking good, if not more than that. Continuing down, we'll go to the next page, skip over the Conservation Act, and head down into the equipment rental program. You see the chart there showing the number of completed acres we did so far, we're approaching 1,500 acres. There's still quite a bit out there that we haven't reported yet because we do wait for the fall season to wrap up before we report on the final numbers. So we expect to hit probably the, close to the 2,000 acre area by the end of the year, so it's another good year for the rental program. With that, I guess I'll just round out by saying, letting you know what we did at the Soil and Water Board. On the next page, we list the number of, or the new applications we received, as well as the payments, that's all tallied there for you to see. A number of these projects might look familiar, you did take action on the bulk one and the sharky ones, the wetland restoration components of those. But quite a bit of activity, but keep in mind, this is for September and October because we did skip September seven reporting, what the board had done in those two months combined. So quite a few applications and quite a few payments, as you can see. And following those tables are the fact sheets for any projects that were newly proposed or that we finished paying on. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions for Troy? Okay, here none, I think we can move on to staff WMO updates with Vanessa.
Thank you, Commissioner Weaver, I'm just going to have one quick update for this month as we've got a rather long agenda. I want to recognize our staff person, Melissa. October 10th is actually her 15-year service award with the county and the SWMO. She is an absolute pleasure to work with, she is incredibly well-rounded and extremely knowledgeable. She is a valuable resource for our residents, we hope she's here for another 30 more. But I do just want to recognize her and thank her for her 15 years of service with the county. We usually do something a little bit more, but given the current situation, this is kind of what we have. You're all welcome to take Melissa out for coffee, though, when this is done. And that's all I'm going to have for today.
All right, thank you Vanessa, thank you Melissa for your time, I'm guessing you're not hoping for another 30 years probably, but thanks for retirement, I'll become, come before then, but, any questions for Vanessa?
Rita, this is Troy.
Yes, Troy.
I don't have questions for Vanessa, but I just want to concur about Melissa. As a partner and have been working with her for the last 10 years, she truly is a treasure and we do enjoy working with her every chance we get. So, thank you Melissa for all your service and being so great.
All right. This is Virgil, I'd like to echo what Troy said, I've had the privilege of working with Melissa now for ongoing to 15 years. She was retired, it seems like yesterday, and she's always been a very easy person to work with, very informative, very willing to work with our volunteers. Thank her for her good work, thank you.
Thank you so much, and Virgil was actually part of my interview panel when I first interviewed for this job, so. Don't think Melissa's gloves should have poked deep enough yet, anybody else want to jump in? All right, well, thank you, Melissa. Okay, we can move on to ongoing business and project updates, Ryan.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me all right? I got, kind of my audio is a little ways away, so I just want to make sure that, okay. I'm seeing some heads nodding, so that's good. Just a couple updates here. One is our tour that we just had in September, so just a thank you to everybody that was able to attend. We thought it went really well and we hope that it was very informative to all the attendees. It was nice to see the recognitions of the Conservationist of the Year and then Jim Schwangler for all his work too, to the WPC. Too bad the weather couldn't cooperate, but that means we've got the bad weather out of the way for next year, so, you know, we should be good to go, hopefully. Second item, we have ongoing maintenance at some of our CIP sites, one of which was completed. So Quarry Creek has two different spots that we're doing maintenance on it, one by the detention structure, which is largely wrapped up. So our Public Works Department completed that about two weeks ago, and they timed it fairly well between the rains. So it came out pretty well, I was able to talk with the landowner and they seemed pretty pleased as well too. So I think that one we can cross off the list. There's a second spot at a different location, and I was able to coordinate with the landowner today. With the snow and, you know, potential, potentially it being muddy, there was some question as to whether we could access it, but it sounds like we can. So that maintenance will actually occur tomorrow, and it's fixing some tile lines that are actually causing some sloughing around a berm and some erosion around an inlet pipe. So hopefully we're able to find those lines and correct the issues, and I can certainly give a follow-up update to the group in November. And we still have one other site as well, it's part of our stream bank sites where we were correcting some of the bluff erosion. This was part of our Phase 1 CIP, it's kind of north of the golf course. That one, we're just waiting on the corn coming out of the field, so it's still out there as of this morning. So we're just kind of waiting to see when that will come off, and then at that point, we're able to get access to the back and hopefully able to correct that as well. And luckily, before the snow occurred, we were able to do a riparian buffer planting. If you remember, one of our buffer plantings at the golf course experienced some erosion in 2019. We had some ice jams on Sand Creek, there was a presidential disaster declaration that was declared right after those, and when the waters receded, we noticed one of the buffers had eroded. The golf course fixed the erosion on their own, and then it was able to be replanted. And I did notice there were some natives still out there from the previous planting, but certainly, by and large, a lot of them were gone. And so we put in roughly about 450 plugs, and that was a little bit more than what we needed even, and kind of worked with the golf course on a couple other spots where we were able to touch them up, and then they actually wanted to look at one spot on their own as well to do another buffer planting. So I think we even put in one more site that they were able to kind of plant on their own with some extra plugs, so it worked out really well. And then lastly, last week, the Water Resources Conference at the University of Minnesota, they put that on, and this was the second year in a row where we actually had a presentation. Last year, we had one regarding kind of Sand Creek as a whole and all the work that's gone on there with our various grants, the Targeted Watershed Grant, the EPA Grant, we had a lot of different partners there and it turned out really well. This year, Interflue, which is our design consultant on three of our four stream bank CIPs, and the three that we did end up constructing, and the fourth one is on hold with FAR, but they actually came to us and we mutually thought that we could present on one of our stream bank sites, and so we were one of the sessions on the first day, it was a breakout session. So we were able to present that with Interflue in collaboration with them, and it was a much shorter presentation than last year, but still it was fairly well attended, I think there were 150 people attending all virtually. Didn't have any technical issues, which is always a concern when you're doing a presentation virtually, so everything went pretty well. They will be sending out the presentations, and I don't know if they'll be public to people that didn't attend, but if they are, I'd be happy to send it along, and if anybody was curious to watch it, I'd feel free to do so. And with that, I'll stand for any questions that anybody has.
The one thing I would add, Madam Chair Commissioners, is that the maintenance restoration work was primarily performed by Ryan himself during the planting, which saves the WMO a considerable amount of money not having to contract that out. So I do want to note that part as well, because he usually wouldn't. But we really appreciate it, so thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome, I'm good on planting some plugs for a while.
All right, thank you, Ryan, any questions? Okay, here none, we can move on to program updates from Melissa.
So we have four different project programs, I'm going to update you on, I'll try to be quick about this. The watercraft inspections, they didn't start until the weekend of July 4th this year due to the pandemic and trying to get everything up and running, but they did run through the end of September, so September 27th was the last day of inspections. And what was really nice is waterfront restorations did complete the contracted hours. We thought they were going to be short, but they had inspectors that were really flexible, added in some more hours on all four lakes, which was Cedar, McMahon, O'Dowd and Thole. So they completed a total of 1,059 inspection hours between July 4th and September 27th. So we ended the season on those inspections within budget, and we should have a draft report by mid-November, so maybe November I can give you kind of a more detailed report on that. Moving on to our 2019 watershed-based funding grant, in that grant, we had a chloride assessment kind of project, and if you remember, we did lots of smart salting trainings the last few years, and out of those trainings, we learned some things. So I put together a grant amendment to Bowser, which I submitted off to them, and we've already received comments, but we were going to move some money around to offer tools to nonprofits like churches and schools and even private contractors, because that was one of the things that they set at the parking lot and sidewalks, trainings that they were, you know, lacking in order to be able to reduce their salt use was the correct kind of tools. So we're hoping Bowser's going to allow us to use some of the grant funds, switch some things around, and use some of those funds to offer grants to those different entities. The only thing they're hung up on is whether they want us to do that for private contractors, so we're waiting to hear if that's going to be allowed or not. And then we're going to be moving some funds to technical systems, to the SWCD. From an assessment that we did, an abandoned well assessment in the Parley Spring Lake watershed district, I think it was Parley Spring Lake watershed district, for drinking water source areas. Our staff, our mental health staff, got some ideas from Dakota County, so it didn't take as much funds or much budget to determine how to do that, so we had some funds left over and we thought the best use of those would be into technical systems, since there's such a demand for that. So waiting to hear this week on whether Bowser's going to allow money to be used, grant funds to be used, to offer tools to private contractors to reduce their salt use, so we'll see how that turns out this week. Between those two things, is there any questions so far? Okay, so the third update is the Cedar Lake curly leaf pond weed treatments. So for the last two years, we've been using a chemical called fluoridone. And after the treatment, usually about in July, we do a post-treatment surveys, we check every single sampling point on the lake. And with this second year, I was kind of concerned about the results. So fluoridone is a chemical, it's very effective on curly leaves, but it can also harm natives. And we didn't, we talked about using it years ago, but we didn't because we were concerned about that, but it's been used on more lakes now, so the DNR thought it was okay to try it, and it's a lot cheaper, it costs half of the amount that endofol does. So, but this second year after the survey results, I was quite concerned because we didn't find a lot of natives. It was effective for curly leaves, but we also found something that I never found before in Cedar, which was a gigantic plume of blue green algae in July in the middle of the lake. And normally Cedar Lake does get like a blue green algae bloom, but it's more in the really shallow bay area, but this is in the deepest part of the lake. So after talking with the DNR, set of a meeting that we had on October 15th with the Cedar Lake Improvement District, DNR and PLM, our vendor, and we feel like we're worried that the lake is going to switch to a more algae-dominated ecosystem if we continue to use fluoridone. So after that discussion and looking at the results, because native plant frequency of occurrence is down, native plant taxa numbers, meaning how many different types of natives we're finding, is down. We were really concerned that we need to switch gears again, we need to stop using fluoridone and either go back to endofol or have a different strategy, so we came up with three different options. The first one is to do nothing in 2021 and just take a break from treatments and then see if the natives bounce back, see how much curly leaf comes back and in what density. Or number two, allow some diquat spot treatments, so diquat is a different kind of chemical, we use it on O'Dowd and Thole, it's very effective. The problem with it is, is that you can't use it on a large scale like Cedar Lake is, so we couldn't use all diquat on Cedar. The third option, so we would have to, sorry, it was number two, we would have to treat smaller areas then, we wouldn't be able to treat the whole lake. The third option that PLM came up with is more of like a hybrid management strategy, which we would go out and do the pre-treatment survey early in the year, and depending on what we're finding, we would do some kind of a mixture of endofol, which has been a really reliable, effective chemical to use on curly leaves, which is what we were using up and through 2018. And then for smaller areas, use diquat in some kind of spot treatment areas, smaller areas. The reason why we don't want to go back to just using endofol is it's very expensive. To treat the whole lake, it's about $93,000. Diquat's a little bit, I would say, almost half that cost also. So we proposed that to Lake Improvement District, they were going to take it back to their full board, kind of give us some feedback, which I haven't heard back yet, but at least we have a few different options that we'll look at. And we might not make the decision until springtime when we see kind of what the pre-treatment survey results show. But PLM is going to give us some cost estimates on diquat because we don't have those for Cedar, but we do have cost estimates for endofol in our current contract with PLM. So we're either going to do a lot less of the lake with just diquat treatments, or we'll do kind of a hybrid mix of two different chemicals, or we might not treat at all. So we'll just have to see what the results say, and we're hoping that natives do come, start to come back next year, but we feel like we're damaging the lake at this point, so we had to switch gears for sure. I have one more update, does anybody have any questions about that before I move on? No, okay. The fourth update is, I know that you saw in Vanessa's email that she sent out the PAC that we, we got funding for the McMahon outlet, which quite honestly, we didn't think was going to come through, but it came through. So it is under the category of DNR funding, which means it requires a 50% cost share, and we have to show that upfront. So Vanessa and I have some talking to do, she's got talking to do with Kate and some other departments on how we're going to be able to very soon show that full match, and we have some ideas. And Lisa Fries from Highway, our Transportation Services Director here at Scott County, has offered that Highway would do construction supervision for us, and we believe we can use that staff time as in kind, but we'll have to figure out what that dollar amount is. And we also still need to talk to Spring Lake and Cedar Lake Townships, because McMahon Lake is mostly in Spring Lake Township, but a small portion of it, the southern part, is in Cedar Lake Township. So we will be going to them, asking them for some kind of cost share. Spring Lake is aware of that, Cedar Lake is not, so we'll have to probably give them some kind of a presentation, getting them up to speed on it. Because we have invited them early on in the process, when we've been having meetings with landowners. I don't think anybody's ever showed up, though, I don't have Cedar Lake on any of the side-in shoots, so. So it's exciting, but it's also a little scary because we have to make sure we have all the match, and yeah. It's kind of unprecedented for the WMO to actually get funding in a bonding bill like that, so I'm excited about it. That's all I have, does anybody have any questions?
Is there a date that we need to have the match by?
Vanessa, did Pat mention that to you? You're muted.
Sorry. Thankfully, I have a little bit of time, so yeah, I did speak with Pat and I've been talking with MMB as well. We do have a small window of opportunity, probably the next, till the end of the year, to kind of determine where that match is going to come from. I'll speak about it a little bit further in the budget discussion. But you do need to have a match upfront prior to them signing contracts, which is a little different than any of our other grant funds that we have received in the past or our typical grant programs. So working on a few things, I'm probably not going to listen to them now, just simply because I don't have anything guaranteed. But, you know, we were really excited to hear, obviously what we originally applied for was the full funding. The legislature does need to move funds around as they can to make it work, and they moved us into safe options, which I think is still extremely generous, considering the DNR was pretty clear that most lake outlets like this would never have gotten funding otherwise. So we're, I'm not going to let this go, I'm chasing down funding, but it is a little bit of a hiccup. But it is a little bit of a hiccup and a surprise that we have a little bit of time.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions you hear?
Yeah, Rita, Commissioner Shea here. So is everyone kind of familiar with the numbers that we have there? Can you kind of go over like, okay, what was approved by the legislature and kind of what does the, what does Scott County have to come up with? Everyone knows like the amount in the bill was X amount. Do you want to just kind of fill everyone in on that?
Yeah, I'm going to just jump on this one, Melissa. Normally Melissa would do a really good job of it, but I'm just going to take it from the financial point. So we were awarded a $600,000 grant through the DNR. That $600,000 is a 50% match towards a $1.2 million project. That $1.2 million project is two parts. It's the outlet and a directly connected nearest channel restoration project on Zanidoo, Sand Creek. So to install the outlet directly, we would need $600,000, which means bare bones upfront, I need to come up, we need to come up with $300,000. If it is necessary to leave that connected project on the table, we may do that. That's kind of the bare bones of how that portion works. But again, we need to have $300,000 upfront on the table, design contracts to start installing the outlet in 2021, which we would do engineering and permitting with construction in 2022. Sorry, design and permitting in 2021, installation in 2022. So.
And what was the Zanidoo project again?
So the original, yeah, so the original application asked for any directly connected project. And in this case, we do have a directly connected project. There's a near channel stream restoration project on Zanidoo, just downstream in Sand Creek. So that's a roughly $600,000 project as well that we will pursue regardless. If we were able to do them as part, as part of the entire project, that would be wonderful. But at this point, I'm splitting up to focus very specifically on the outlet.
Yeah, right. And with, you know, with that being, because I mean, with the landowners and everything on McMahon, that basically did all the, you know, much of the work too, sort of getting this kind of going. As long as, you know, we're just kind of putting it on that because everyone's a little concerned with the Zanidoo project and everybody else on it. But it sounds like you guys are working on it and everything, so that's great.
We're working very hard. Everybody's put a lot into this, the residents, Melissa, our senators and our congressmen, even Claire, who if you don't know who she is, she's our lobbyist, has put so much into this that we're continuing to work very, very hard on it. And again, we're very excited. But that's kind of how the funding breaks down.
Any other questions from Melissa or Vanessa?
Question. I'm a little confused yet. What's the next step?
That is actually a great question. The next step is to secure match funding so that when the DNR comes back to us with the contract and proposal ready to go, we can move forward with that. So they've given us a couple of forms to fill out as to where and how we can provide and secure that funding. So we need to fill that out and get that back to them. Again, we have a couple of months to do that because they're moving a little bit slow right now. But that's, that's the next step.
So to clarify that, this will be on our agenda for next month again?
It may be on the agenda next month, or it may have to go to board depending upon timing. It might just have to go straight to board.
I would ask that if it does have to go straight to board, that we be at least notified via email of the details?
Absolutely.
Okay. One last call for questions. Hearing none, let's move on to new business. The first item is petition to name a water body. And I believe Vanessa, you can introduce Mr. Francis.
I will. Thank you, Chairman. Madam Chair, I apologize. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of a background first. Melissa, if you would be so kind as to, can you zoom in on that at all? If not, that's all right. So the county received a petition to name a geological feature in August. And when it's something like a lake, river, wetland, one of our natural resources, natural resources certainly wants to take a look at it, make sure folks aren't doing things like naming a storm pond or, you know, a wetland track or something, no other issues in that regard. However, naming a geological feature is actually guided in Minnesota under statute 83A.02 to 83A.07. So our wonderful resident Dale Francis actually was very thorough and did all of his research to make sure that he was able to follow each of the steps necessary to bring this forward. One thing I will point out before I get too much further is, it was brought to my attention that, I apologize, there is a typo in my memo. The water body is a small .1835 square mile shallow lake, approximately about 41 acres. I apologize for that. It's located in kind of south west, southeast of Cedar Lake. It's a smaller open water lake. It's a natural systems lake and it just has not ever received a name. In order to name a geological feature, you have to have many steps taken care of. First and foremost, you cannot name a lake after a living person. It is fully acceptable to name a naval lake or water body or geological feature after somebody who has passed away. And in this case, Mr. Francis is requesting a petition to name it after his daughter that has passed. Another step is that we work with the DNR very closely to ensure that they have no issues with the name that is chosen. If you want to name Round Lake, unfortunately, I'm sorry, there are commercential lakes in Minnesota and the DNR will say, no, thank you. I was surprised to find out we only have like two other lakes nearby and only four other lakes in Minnesota with the word Hope in the name. So the DNR was in fact supportive of the name Lake Hope and had no other issues with the name Lake Hope. So they also received a commemorative information and details and they were fine with that as well. So we are going to get our letter from the DNR supporting this petition. Another step is that they need to provide within their petition signatures of 15 voters. And there are several steps which actually our county auditor indeed goes through. For those of you who've been here for a while, you might have remembered the naming of Pika Creek, which is my seven-year-old son Pokemon fan's favorite water body in Scott County. Rita's smiling, so she clearly understands Pokemon. So it's a similar process. And actually, our county auditor did a lot of work and a lot of heavy lifting on that. Another step is that they need to go to the local township board and ask them for their input. And in this case, Mr. Francis did go to the Cedar Lake Township Board back in September. They were very supportive as well. Their only question was about a sign and frankly, we have funding in the WMO budget for something like that, so we can certainly pay for a sign later. It's a small cost for the WMO. Anywho, the next step is the WPC, we would ask by staff, a recommendation for the board, whether or not we'd like to support the naming of this water body. The board will hold a public hearing in November. Barring any issues, the board has been passed a resolution and adopts the name. We would submit that to the DNR. It'll go on the official register of the DNR. And then we have a nice outdoor social assistance party. That's the official unofficial process. Dale, if you would be available to tell the story a little bit in your own words as to why you brought this petition to the county. I think it's a really lovely story and I think it's really meaningful coming from you. Are you with us Dale?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I really appreciate the opportunity to explain the passion behind it and where it came from. I really, she gave me credit for doing all these steps, but really honestly, I didn't have a clue. And Vanessa was very, very helpful through this process, along with many other people in fact, but Vanessa's been great to help me through this. I live in this neighborhood. My family and I moved into this neighborhood called Country Hollows about, almost 13 years ago. And it's, if you don't know, I guess it's six miles east of New Prague on the north side of 19. Country Hollows runs north off of 19 and there's no through streets. It goes up and sort of horseshoes up there. And there's a lake in the neighborhood. And we, I, myself, along with some other neighbors in there who, we discovered that it didn't have an official name. And being a small neighborhood, not that many families, we're all very close knit. And I was talking to many of them in the past about the idea of naming this Lake Hope because I have three daughters, two that are living and one is my angel and that's Hope. And so my oldest daughter Faith and my youngest daughter Noel loved, also loved the idea of naming it after their sister, who was the middle daughter. And so I had no idea how to go about it. So I started looking into it and got, like I said, got a lot of help along the way. It's an old family name as well, but you know, my, my daughter, more recent obviously. And so then we have a nature trail that runs along this lake and we spend a lot of time down there, as do other neighbors, just enjoying it and sitting there and it's just a beautiful spot. And a lot of the neighbors said it'd be nice to have an actual name for the lake, other than just the DNR ID. And so that's how it kind of came about. And I would love to have Lake Hope as this, this legacy that goes well beyond myself, but can be there and enjoyed by people for generations to come. And so I guess that's kind of just the background on it. She passed away and she was very little and, but my, my daughters always loved the idea of celebrating her birthdays and, and anything like this, they were very excited about, as well as other neighbors. When I spoke to Cedar Lake Township, before the meeting was done, I had several neighbors texting me very, almost more excited than I was, like, how did it go? You know, they were very excited about having it as a possibility as well. So I, that's the, that's the story behind it. Again, I just appreciate the time to be able to tell the background.
Thank you Dale. Again, we really appreciate you taking the time. Really appreciate having you here and the story. So as I mentioned, it's a rare wonderful thing we get to do sometimes. So that's kind of the procedure as well as the story behind it. We would stand for any questions from any of the commissioners who are here? And oh, that's a photo generally. Apologies, a little bit of a dark photo, but.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
Okay, this is Virgil. Are you referring to the body of water that's just south of the Devaroq Wildlife Pond?
I believe, yeah, that is right.
Thank you.
This does not work on Melissa's laptop.
For Vanessa or Mr. Francis? Do we have a motion?
Since you all make a motion to approve the action item to rename that unnamed lake to Lake Lake Hope, I think it's a great idea.
This is Virgil, just pointing clarification. We're not allowed to move to name it. We're allowed to recommend to the board to name it.
I'll amend my motion to, to say that we, we are looking to move it forward to the board to accept it.
Our approval, yes, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Yep, I will do roll. Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Pitts?
Aye.
Commissioner Veerling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Phil? And Commissioner Shea?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you Dale.
Okay, next we can move on to the public hearing on the proposed budget and levy. Vanessa, would you like to introduce this first before we, for comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Melissa, are you able to pull up? Thank you, wonderful, okay. So Madam Chair and Commissioners, this year, the Scott Auto Shed Management Organization is proposing a 3% increase in the levy and budget. It's in line with previous years. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. We did email out the fully proposed budget to Commissioners as well as a little bit of a memo identifying what some of those budget drivers are and some of those main budget impacts. I do realize that budget discussions are not necessarily the most exciting things in the world, but it are relevant and important, so hopefully I'm able to keep you awake. We did have to do a little bit of last minute adjusting to accommodate for some of the match for receiving that bonding bill for McMahon. So we had had some money set aside and I was able to work the budget to find a bit more of that match. So I apologize, but it did come out about a day later than planned. So the 2021 preliminary budget, we'll start out with revenue. Our local water planning grant, which is the annual grant we receive each year again, is at about $8,000 a year. Our interest income, just from our accounts, is again at about $10,000. Both of these line items are pretty stable in our budget. Property taxes with the proposed 3% increase is $1,297,910. That 3% is identified in our watershed management plan in the implementation section, table We did omit, there's also an increase of 2.75 that's in our approved plan for inflation. We did leave that out this year to be a little bit more consistent with the county proposed levy due to impacts from the pandemic. So in addition to property taxes, we have our Bowser Watershed based funding grant from 2019. That was the last round of 126,000. So as you may be familiar, we don't put any funds into our revenue until they've been encumbered and that's, that's when we transfer them into revenue. So until we've encumbered them and we've spent the money, because these are generally reimbursement based, we won't count them as revenue until that point. You'll notice in the detailed budget that I sent out, there are multiple line items in there for a few of our upcoming grants because we recognize that Uh, cause we recognize that they are an incoming source of revenue, but we will not be, uh, taking in any of that revenue next year. Because we will not have encumbered those funds next year. Um, another item on here is the, ooh, I apologize. That off by a little bit, I apologize, the description. But it is, uh, a 2015 EPA 319 grant. Um, this is a, uh, one of the smaller, medium sized grants that we've had from 2016. That's, that's about over as well. This is about the last $45,000 from that grant as well we'll be taking in. Uh, we also have our partnership with the Dow Lake Association for $2,000. And then our AIS funding we received from the DNR or NRPG block grant of $12,000. Which puts us at a total revenue of 1.4 million dollars. It's 1,497, $94,000, um, on average. That's our revenue. Melissa, if you'd be willing to go to slide two please. These are, uh, this is a summary of our preliminary budget expenses for 2021. Uh, administration is at about 126,680. Um, it's slightly smaller than this year's, however, it's generally on par. Uh, so there's very little change in administration for this year. Uh, land and water treatment is, uh, 1,104,308. Uh, it's again a combination of our cost share and our tax program, which I'll display in detail on the next page. Monitoring and data collection, uh, is about 30,000. We are increasing a little bit of our monitoring and data collection, uh, to be consistent with our plan. Do you want to implement our macroverter bit monitoring program? Um, monitoring and data collection is usually critical for our implementation of our plan and also for our grant funds, um, to show that what we are implementing is effective. Uh, that being said, most grants don't actually cover the cost of monitoring and data collection. So as a WMO, we usually have to do that with our local funds. Uh, education and public outreach is at $100,000. Uh, we did have to go down a bit in this notably. Um, we had been supplementing, uh, the Scott Watershed Education Partnership Program, uh, for a few years. Unfortunately, we were doing that, uh, because we had the larger Sand Creek $5 million targeted grants. Uh, that grant has now ended. We no longer have the additional funds, um, to help commit to that. So, um, education and public outreach has gone down a little bit, uh, this year. Um, and it has gone down noticeably for the work that we do with the, the Scott County Watershed Education Partnership and Scott Sealed Water Conservation District. Regulation is about the same. We have about the same amount of work we do, um, with our landowners and our local government agencies. Um, when staff does regulatory work for the county, we also have some funds in the natural resource budget that we charge too. So a lot of that is actually charged to the natural resources budget, which is a separate budget from the SWMO budget. Uh, inventory and assessment, we only have a few sub watershed assessments right now proposed for 2021. Because much of 2021 is implementing, uh, land and water treatment projects. So as with most WMOs, we exit and flow, uh, depending upon where our focus is each year. This year is going to be a higher CIP year. Um, so we'll have a little bit of, of lower inventory and assessment. Um, and we'll ramp that back up in time to be ready for additional grants further down the road. Uh, and that's generally the reason why we do those, to be able to target those projects and go after those grants. Uh, planning is again about the same. Planning efforts to be consistent and collaborative with our neighbors, um, stays, you know, pretty much the same from year to year. Um, we are going to be doing a, uh, should be a minor plan amendment, but my guess frankly is that'll be a major plan amendment, uh, because we need to update our CIP, uh, to apply for some of those grant funds. And traditionally Bowser will ask that to be a major plan amendment. That's just my guess. Uh, coordination is, is up a little bit. Uh, we are, um, going to have to contribute to the One Watershed One Plan planning and coordination effort. Uh, so there's a few other things that are going on these, these next couple of years in these areas, uh, that are, are taking a little bit more staff time. Uh, maintenance is, uh, consistent with the last few years. Um, we, as Brian mentioned, we're starting to see some maintenance activities from our projects that have been going in. So you'll notice that maintenance is going to probably stay either stable or slowly kind of sort of creep up a bit overall for the years. Um, loan repayment, I apologize, that was a bold one. Uh, that should not be there. That isn't, that is an error. Uh, with that one not there, the total is 1,511,986 for our budget expenses. Uh, there is no loan repayment in the budget I sent you, so I apologize. That was still in the template and it showed up. Um, fund balance usage, uh, it does put us, um, having to dip into our fund balance, which is currently projected to start at $305,000 and projected to dip into it about $17,978. Now, in our implementation plan, in our watershed management plan, we were projected to dip in about $15,000. So we're very much on par with what was projected in our approved plan. Uh, next slide please. I hope everybody's still awake. Okay. Uh, so just to break down land and water treatment, because this is generally where our largest expenses come from and, and we're, most of the work we do, uh, as you all know, we're very much a boots-on-the-ground agency. Uh, cost share and incentives, uh, projected is $246,000. Uh, this does include a little bit of funds anticipated for the 2020, 21, 22 watershed-based implementation funds. So if we do not secure that grant, uh, that amount would be reduced by $50,000. Uh, targets and capital projects, uh, this is some of our focus areas now. We have the nine elements plan, uh, as you know, which is a 16-year basically implementation plan, broken down into four budget cycles. Um, so for the next four years, we have some projects and programs that we have committed to. Uh, our focus area for 2021 is PICA and Cedar. Uh, there are some sub watershed, uh, infiltration basins and runoff reduction practices identified for Cedar. And PICA has a channel stabilization project, uh, planned for that as well. Uh, again, as Melissa started to discuss, we applied for an amendment for the Bowser Watershed Based Funding 2019 Chloride Project. Uh, so we intend to finalize that with about $78,000. Um, we are applying for, with the approval or recommendation by the WPC, a, another grant application for the watershed-based implementation funding. So again, this is where, uh, the agencies in the lower Minnesota River Watershed South area are allocated about $800,000 between all of us. And we kind of have to decide how we're going to prioritize that and, and allocate those funds. So for our group, um, our projects are due at the end of the month for submittal. Uh, they then still have to go through Bowser for vetting and, and approval and ranking. So, um, I'm still putting it in here because this is what we were, what we're hoping to do. Um, I feel like there is, uh, a fairly good chance that we could receive it. Um, but it is not guaranteed at this time. So that is why there is an asterisk there. So there is 50% match, uh, which is the LGU portion of that grant. And there is a 50% uh, basically reimbursement cost that we had planned to be putting in, in 2021. Um, just a little bit of further explanation on that one. The grant proposal is 325,000. Um, we would put in $50,000 overall, just LGU match, which leaves about a $275,000 grant revenue. Which is why when you look at the bigger budget, you'll see up at the top under revenue, $275,000. But in my memo detail, I just summarized the full grant amount, which is, or the full project amount, which is 325. That's how it breaks down. Um, I, I mean, assuming everybody has of course read this in full detail and has summarized all of my little notes in the memo. Um, another item on here, uh, we are partnered with the City of Prior Lake and the Credit River Township to address flooding on Markley. This is something we've done for a couple of years now. And we are basically, uh, committed to continue for at least the next five years with this partnership, while we look at maybe a long-term way to address Markley. Uh, so each of us equally pay in $15,000 each year. And Prior Lake, uh, does all of the permitting and running. Um, I'll say it's a great deal. It is a great deal. Um, and we're very much appreciative of that. So right now that $15,000 again just pays towards our portion of annual pumping, uh, while we work on a long-term solution. This one unfortunately, unlike McMahon, does not have a very clear easy-to-access outlet channel. So, um, this one has many, many hurdles. Uh, and then finally, the McMahon Lake Outlet Project. Uh, as everybody is aware, we've talked about this, we did receive our bonding bill. It does require us to come up with $300,000 upfront. Um, we do have $100,000 in match funds available right now, proposed for 2021. Uh, subtracting all of the other expenses and commitments that we have, uh, $100,000 is genuinely the best that the WMO can come up with, uh, and not dip too deeply into a fund balance, which is only itself already at only 130, 300,000. So, uh, in addition to that, of course, this has always been a project we said, uh, did require partners. So, um, I'm still very confident we'll, we'll be able to find the other $200,000. Uh, as it stands, this is the hu, uh, what the WMO will move forward with. Um, I did not include our current expenses. So while we didn't do pumping this year, there is a, a notable amount of staff time that Melissa and Megan have put towards this. Um, so it does kind of start to chip away at the project costs, which is another good reason to get this one in the ground. Um, after that, um, the other two items that are consistently in the land and water treatment program, of course, are the AIS Aquatic Client Management Program at 36,000 and the technical assistance, which is our general staffing technical assistance of 92,000, which is again a little bit of a reduction, uh, sorry, I apologize, a little bit of a difference, but not significant for previous years. But that's, and that's how we arrive at a total of $1,104,000 in summary for land and water treatment. Melissa, next slide please. Almost done, I swear, I promise. Uh, so, if you were paying attention, this probably doesn't, uh, come as a big surprise to you here. Uh, preliminary budget is 73% land and water treatment. Again, we are a boots-on-the-ground organization, uh, and that pretty much reflects it. We generally range in the 60 percentile, uh, for land and water treatment. And so this is generally in line, maybe a little bit high. Um, but I think it's still in line and allows us to implement those items in our, uh, approved plan plus add, uh, some of those larger newer projects like McMahon, that were not in the approved plan. Uh, overall, bottom line, the levy increase is 37,599, uh, or 3%. The average market value residential impact is an increase of 49 cents. So the average resident pays 49 cents more. They're going from $37.15 to $37.64. Which leaves us with a projected fund balance at 32% of operating expenses. We really want to get that up to 35 to 50 range, but we're, uh, not too, too far under that as of now. Um, for those of you who remember, previous years, we've been in the twenties. So, uh, it's very critical that we build up that capacity, because that's what allows us to pay for some of these unanticipated expenses that come up, as it always does in, in managing natural resources. Um, so again, we were very successful in receiving all three major grant programs, while two out of three, I'd like to hope, were at the third. I want to count my chickens that further hatched. Uh, but again, uh, grants are becoming more stable, but smaller, which means that, um, you know, you kind of have to realize that you're gonna probably need a little bit more money upfront, because that's another component. They're asking for more money upfront generally, or a larger percentage of match. Uh, but the, the, again, the turnaround is that they are a little bit more stable. Um, as you can see here overall, over the last few years, you'll see that spike where, uh, we received that Sand Creek targeted grant. Uh, and, and we're starting to get back to that place where we need to just kind of stabilize our program so we can just keep doing the work that we're doing. Commissioner Casillas did email a few questions, which I will address now before we open it up for public comment. Um, uh, one of those great questions is, will this mean staff cuts? Uh, for the SWMO, uh, kind of the bottom line is we're about flat with staffing. Uh, we've moved a little bit of time around from administration into boots-on-the-ground projects and implementation. Uh, and that just again allows us to do what we're doing with a tighter budget. Uh, we probably can't go any leaner. We're about as, we're about as lean as we can absolutely humanly be. Uh, but no, we would not have any staff cuts for the SWMO. However, excuse me, we did have to cut our funding for the SWCD and that is a critical component of the work that we do. A lot of that has to do with that we don't have those larger grants to provide that staffing. Um, and Troy, if you would be willing to just spend a, a couple of minutes here discussing what impacts this has for staffing to the SWCD, would you be available?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you. So, um, the, the impact to so water staffing, um, from, from a budget perspective, it, it's, it's pretty significant. Um, it's like a 10% or more cut. And the, the net impact in terms of what will happen as a result is we, we have some time to weather, you know, ups and downs in the budget, but if it becomes a chronic thing, uh, and this continues, then eventually we run out of our own fund balance. Um, you know, you can only run in the, the red so many years before you have to start, you know, cutting those expenses that have, um, you know, a significant role or part of our budget, which is staffing, we're just about, you know, 90 some percent staffing in terms of our costs. The, the thing about it is that, um, I don't know if, I didn't quite catch the exact numbers Vanessa, but it's around 45 to 50,000. You know, that, that's significant enough to meet a full staff person, even though it's not the total cost of a staff position. When you reach a certain critical mass in cuts, you have to basically let somebody go, even though it's not 100% of the staff costs, because you get to the point where you can't keep that person employed by not, when you don't have 100% of the funding there for them. So even though a typical staff position might cost anywhere from 60,000 to 80,000, um, you know, a $50,000 cut is as good as a full position. So, um, the, the thing we try to do is, um, we do try to work with the WMO and, and take some of the slack up in terms of years that maybe, um, you have more work to do, we fill in, and years you don't, we, we seek, um, work or, or revenue sources in other locations to try to be that stabilizing factor. Um, but overall, our goal is to really try to maintain staff so we can implement these programs on a consistent and reliable basis, especially the tax program, um, land and water treatment. It's so significantly relies on relationships and experience in people. And as soon as you lose a staff person, And as soon as you lose a staff person, you lose the relationships as well. And that's the tough part. And we need to become to a point where we have some stable and reliable funding in order to keep that momentum and to keep those relationships solid. So that's our number-one goal, and, you know, we all go through rough years. And so we'll get through this one as well. I think what's going to be more important is just looking longer term at what does the program require and what is the right number that we should be at? I think we all got to take some, you know, kind of, I guess I've lost the words I want to use, but we have to, never mind, I've lost my train of thought on that. But anyway, the reason we're kind of at this point with the WMO is, you know, there's a long history there. I just kind of explained why we're such a big part of the land and water treatment. Prior to two thousand and four, the county would provide a grant to the So-and-Water District. It was a big, like a block grant, anywhere from, you know, two hundred to three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. And then after two thousand and four, there was a big paradigm shift in terms of how the county wanted to fund the So-and-Water District. They basically saw that so much of our work was consistent and related to what the watersheds were doing, not just WMO, but Prior Lake, Vermillion, Lower Men, that they said, we would like you guys to go off and do work directly with those agencies, and in order to generate revenues, we'd bill them. So at one point in history, all the work we did would never showed up on these books, right? We would just do the work and not have to worry about who paid or who billed or where we were working. We just did our thing, right? And that all changed in two thousand and four, and ever since then, we've been sort of this quasi-business where everything we do is sort of a contract service. So now we're a big part of the WMO's budget. We're a proportionally big chunk of Prior Lake's budget as well in this sort of fee-for-service arrangement. That said, we don't feel like a fee-for-service agency. We feel like, you know, we're just a partner with the WMO, trying to get this work done. And so we rely heavily, not just on the WMO, but all our partners. And we kind of take this holistic approach where we use staff that we do work in the WMO. That's the same staff that does work in Prior Lake, and the same one that does it in the Vermillion and Lower Men. So we try to juggle all these different pieces and these different locations and programs and bring them together and implement them seamlessly and consistently. But needless to say, the WMO is aligned, share that. So as the WMO goes, so goes the So-and-Water District. Is there anything else you wanted me to cover on that, Melissa or Vanessa?
No, I mean, you're really good. I guess I have one more follow-up piece that I would like you to kind of provide a little bit of background on. So as Troy mentioned, we had a cut in pretty much every, just about every program area that we had. But one of Commissioner Casilius's good questions was, do we have enough staff to do the things we need to do? Or are we cutting staffing to fund more restoration projects? So in this case, especially when it comes to the SWCD, we're having to cut both staffing and the ability to fund projects. I pushed the budgets as much as I could so that the cut was actually more in how many projects we could do and less in the staffing component because of the efforts that the WMO and SWCD have done before. And Troy, can you give a little bit of background on how we arrived at the commitment to staff these programs, because they are people-based programs?
I'll try to, so the thing about our program, as I mentioned, as Vanessa indicated, is it's a people thing. And so our whole goal is to really build capacity and enable our landowners to do the conservation work. If you look across Scott County, for example, it's about ten to eleven percent of the land is publicly owned. So ninety percent is private landowners. And without landowners taking actions to change their behaviors so they're water-friendly, so farmers do practices that limit erosion and runoff, you need landowners to participate. And that's what this whole program is about, is building capacity for them to participate. There's over four thousand landowners, maybe over four thousand, two hundred, some landowners countywide with crockland. That doesn't even touch how many landowners have, you know, residential parcels that contribute somewhat in some way to runoff production. So there's no way we're going to achieve any kind of appreciable benefit in water quality with any work we do without having the participation of landowners. Just a small microcosm of that countywide, as if you look at Cedar Lake. Cedar Lake has around two thousand, six hundred or so acres of land around it, and a thousand of that is crockland owned by over a hundred landowners. So the vast majority of the land contributing issues to Cedar Lake is coming off of private lands. So you're not going to fix any problem by just focusing on public lands where relationships aren't as important. And there's no regulation out there to force every landowner to do everything you want. So you have to be able to convince landowners through voluntary means to do water-friendly management and practices on their land. And so that's where the tax program comes in, and that's what relationships are about. If you don't have relationships and you don't have, then you don't have trust. If you don't have trust, nobody's going to listen to you. So several years ago, when we were facing a similar dilemma in the WMO, and some of the commissioners will remember this, is we had to make a decision about, do we cut staffing or do we cut funds for projects? And they made a priority back then of supporting staff, because you can always work with landowners. You don't always need funding for projects, but you always need somebody to work with landowners to provide technical assistance, guidance. And based on the premise that if you cut staff, you're cutting relationships, and it's like a, you know, a double whammy. So I think that's what Vanessa is kind of dealing with here, is with the budget cuts, what do you cut? We could cut staffing and keep the projects at a level, but if you do that, you're really undermining your program because you don't have the people there to support it. On the other hand, if you're only funding staff, then obviously there's a limit to how much work it can get done with tangible projects on the ground. So I think the approach of, you know, kind of cutting in both areas to some extent is somewhat consistent with past practice of the WPC. And our approach since then, too, has been to have the WMO attempt to try to stabilize that staffing piece and then utilize these grants to supplement the cost-share part so that we're always seeking funding to keep the programs going, at least from the cost-share side of things.
Thank you, Troy. So the answer to her question directly is we actually were cutting both. The SWMO staff, we're only cutting, we are cutting a little bit, but I'm just going to call that about flat. But the SWCD staff, we are cutting both that staffing as well as the projects on the ground. So when you look at the numbers for the cost-share program, we cut a little bit deeper into the actual practices by about eighty thousand dollars. But we cut into the SWCD staffing into that component about thirty-five thousand dollars. So I am proposing a little bit deeper cut into the amount of projects on the ground, but noticing that there's also still some cutting to staffing as well. That's notable. That's kind of, thank you very much, Troy. That's kind of the answer to that question. And then another great question is, do we track to see if goals are achieved and value is based on cost, and then if there's public benefits to these projects? And if we monitor for things like that? It's a great question. We do, in fact. That's part of the great work that the SWCD does for us, because we do it because it's required, but also because it's critical to show for going after funds in the future as well. So one of the things we do is we developed a ranking and batching process for our funds for this year, because we do have limited cost-share funds. And for those of you that are really familiar with our plan, cost share is actually under Goal Six, which is collective action, where the SWMO recognizes that we can't do the work that we do in improving our water resources and maintaining our water resources if we don't work with private landowners. Because as Troy mentioned, ninety percent of the land is privately owned. So we would not be able to implement our plan should we only focus on public lands. That being said, the collective action of our landowners is dependent upon cost-share programs like this to help enable them to practice stewardship and learn stewardship. So that's kind of, you know, where that comes from. But that being said, how do we prioritize which projects we do implement and which ones we fund, and how we prioritize that? Again, that actually goes back to what's identified in our plan. So for example, Goal Number Seven in our watershed management plan is actually about building a resilient landscape. And that's about protecting our wetlands and restoring our wetlands, realizing the value for that for flood capacity and storage is critical for this area. So when we take those cost-share funds, we do split aside funds right away just for those projects, because they don't compare the same to others, but they do have a cost-share benefit of their own. Other ones, we focus on, yes, the amount of total phosphorus or sediment or nutrients that they're able to reduce, as well as ranking them based upon whether or not there is additional match available. So we, as you know, leverage funds from a lot of partners and agencies and grants. And that's, again, under Goal Six of our plan, which is optimizing public expenditure. But to do all of these goals and to meet all of these goals, we really do have to stay on top of assessment and evaluation. So none of these, we just put in and go away. We track all of them through the life of the grants, not just because, again, it's required, but because it's the right thing to do and it helps us do our job better. Different projects have different timelines. Some of them are one, three, five, some of them are three and five years and stuff. So it does vary a little bit depending upon which specific project or program it is. We don't necessarily specifically monitor the projects for wildlife, which was one of the questions Casilius brought forward. I think what she's just asking is, are we looking for, like, what are those other public benefits? And again, back to the plan, we don't do any cost-share projects unless there is a public benefit. So yes, we always hope that the projects that the landowners put in are of benefit to them, but we're doing it honestly with the focus of benefit to our public water resources. So none of our cost-share projects get funded unless there's a value to public water resources. So I believe that that does answer Commissioner Casilius's questions. So I would stand for any questions. And if Madam Chair, you'd be willing to open it up for public comment or questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Vanessa. So at this time, we welcome any comments from the public, and then the commissioners will discuss. Are there any comments from the public? I'll just be quiet for about thirty seconds so people can unmute and jump in.
Just while we wait for a minute, Madam Chair, I will add, if there are questions from the public, they are welcome to email me or call me on the phone, and I will happily address those as well if somebody has a question after the public hearing.
I don't see anybody new, unmuted. Or you can throw questions in the chat or comments in the chat if you're trying to talk and we're not hearing your audio. Okay, here you go. Go ahead.
Nope, you're just going to agree. I don't see any additional members of the public who are with us right now.
Okay, well, then, hearing no questions, we can move on to discussion from the commissioners. Do any of the commissioners have questions at this time? Do we have a motion from the commissioners? And I believe the motion would be to accept the proposed budget as, or accept the budget as proposed? The draft budget?
Madam Chair, the recommendation would be a recommendation to the board in support of the budget and levy.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
We have to make a motion for a recommendation to the board to support the budget.
Give a second. I don't know who that was.
That was Joe.
Okay, thanks, Joe. All right, Vanessa, would you like to roll?
I will. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your patience and attentiveness. I know this is going to be a bit of a long one, so I will do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinch.
Aye.
Commissioner Veerling. Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil. And Commissioner Shea.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the motion is passed. Let's move on to the Watershed-Based Implementation Funding Proposal, Vanessa.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I do apologize. I sure have actually flipped these, and I thought about that this morning. This is our request for a recommendation to move forward with our proposal for the Watershed-Based Implementation Funding. Again, this is Bowser's bi-annual funding program now. They're kind of steering away from, Rita's nodding up and down. They're steering away from the competitive grant funds and moving towards a more stable grant funding program. So again, the SCOTWMO is located within the lower of Minnesota River Watershed South area, which is basically the SCOTWMO all the way up through, it actually touches a little tiny piece in some Dakota County and a little piece here and there. Primarily, the partners are like the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed, the Lower Minnesota River Watershed. There's the Dakota County Black Dog Watershed. It does not include Vermillion, that's actually in another area. It also includes the SCOTSWCD, Dakota County SWCD, and then actually some of the local municipal governments and the Scott Midwackin Sioux community are eligible as well. So there's generally about fifteen partners in this group, and we have to figure out as a group how we're going to prioritize and fund and split about eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars-ish for two years between all of our agencies in a way that's, you know, prioritized and focused and protects resources and meets some of those core qualifications. So what we are going to bring forward is a project for a total project cost of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The Watershed-Based Implementation Funding portion we're asking for is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and a local match of fifty thousand dollars. This one beneficially has only a ten percent match required, which is nice. Most of our other grant programs have a much larger grant match required, so this is a nice one. These are, again, thirty-plus BMPs in conjunction with local landowners as identified in our plan. plan. So the trick on this one is that it must be in your implementation plan. It's a kind of a win, it's kind of a good problem to have, but we've actually implemented most of the projects in our implementation plan already. So to be able to pull out something that is specifically called out in our implementation plan was a little unique. So it can't even just be referenced elsewhere in your plan. It must literally be in the implementation section, for us, at Section Five of our plan. As I mentioned, another reason why we are going for that plan amendment is to add a few new projects to this for future funding cycles. So this is actually our best foot-forward project option. So I will give kudos to Troy for actually writing all of this. It was, but it's very similar to what I would have written. So thank you Troy. So again, this is in conjunction with SWCD. We are very good at doing these. We're very successful with them. They tend to be very cost benefit and they tend to be just very well received and so we'd like to continue towards doing this. And this would add again additional project and program funds towards like the cost share and tax program, which is again that area of need that we don't really have available funding for in 2021. But as you noticed, you know, we're not able to get those $5 million grants anymore, but we are going to go for this, you know, $300,000 project option. So I would stand for any questions from the commissioners. Hopefully I haven't talked your ears off too far tonight.
Is this, no, the proposal goes back to the group to decide to, how to parcel out the money, right? That's what it's like.
Correct. This is what we were, we are entering in the project, basically the project spreadsheet. So there's one spreadsheet for the whole lower Minnesota River Watershed South group. And so everybody's going to put something in there probably, but this is what we're putting in.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions for Vanessa? Okay, hearing none, then this would be a recommendation to use this proposal? Is that what I said?
Yeah. It would be a recommendation to, yeah, apply and, and continue to move forward.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So yeah, I'm sorry. I, I'll just clarify. In previous, I, I asked for a recommendation to proceed with the program in general. Now I'm asking for approval to proceed with this project.
Okay. Great.
This is Virgil. I move that we recommend moving forward, recommendation approval of the plan as presented today by Vanessa.
Do we have a second?
This is Kevin. I'll, I'll second the, I'll, I'll do a second on that.
All right. I will do a roll then. Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinch.
Aye.
Commissioner Veerling.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil.
Aye.
And Commissioner Shea.
Aye.
Thank you. You've all been very, very kind and patient. I appreciate it.
All right. The motion is passed. Ryan, you must be up with the tax docket revision.
Yes. So just wanted to let the group know that every year annually, we revise our cost share policy manual, which we refer to as a docket. And, and some of you who've been on the board for a while know that, that's, it's an annual thing that we do. And so just wanted to let the group know that those revisions are ongoing currently and that how we have it set up is the docket is now a countywide manual that every watershed district or watershed management organization follows. There are differences obviously because our priorities are different and so there's an appendancy section of it. But we want to try to have that collaboration with everybody and follow the same kind of policies, generally speaking, across the county and across political boundaries. So what we have for the WPC as representatives is our Madam Chair and Commissioner Pinch. And ironically, we met just a few hours ago to go through the docket where Troy can walk through all the changes that are being proposed. And we will bring the draft docket. So we still have some work to do based on our conversation today. We will bring that draft docket to the WPC in November for review and potential action at that point. If there are additional comments that we need to address, then we still have the month of December. But the goal is ultimately to try to get it approved either late in, in any given year or really early in the new year, just as we kind of roll out a new year, having those all finalized for any of the applicants that we're working with. So just wanted to let the group know that those are ongoing and you should see something in November.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions on that? All right, hearing none, let's move on to the Jake Bulk Wetland Restoration Contract.
So normally these applications come to you in their action items. However, if you remember, any of the WPC members who attended the July meeting, we had brought to you an action item in terms of, in instances where there is not a WPC meeting and there's an application that needs to be processed from a timing standpoint, that staff could make those approvals. And so you'll notice that this is an information piece. So the, the next two items are, are not action items, they're just for information. As with that recommendation or the approval for staff to make the approvals, we also said that we would then bring any of those applications, or now in this case contracts, to the WPC, just so you are aware of the projects. So the first one is for Jake Bulk and it's a wetland restoration in St. Lawrence Township. The total estimated cost of the project is $34,255. However, roughly only half of the project, $17,235, will come from the WMO. The other main funding source is CRP, which is providing $15,579 and the landowner themselves are contributing $1,441. The source of the funding is the 2020 Local General Fund, which does have the available balance to cover those costs. The restoration of wetlands was deemed one of the higher priorities for the WMO in 2020, which we've identified in, in our comp plan, that wetlands are a high priority project. In this instance, this wetland was historically drained by tile. The restoration will result in two wetlands that will come from rendering the tile lines inoperable. One basin will also have some earthwork done as well to create an earthen berm to help hold back the water. The net result is 4.9 acres of wetland from the two basins and it's for a 15-year contract. The SWCD did recommend approval at their September 15th board meeting. And as stated before, because we did not have a regular WPC meeting in September, staff did review this application and approve it. And so this item is just coming to you for an informational piece. And I apologize, I, as I'm looking through the packet, I noticed that the fact sheet and cost estimate in contract, you've got duplicates for the Scott Sharkey project, which is the next agenda item. So I didn't expect anybody to already look at this, but I did send out an email to everybody after the meeting had started, which has the correct application fact sheet and cost estimate for the Bulk project. And with that, I'll say any questions?
Any questions for Ryan? I think we can move on to the next item, the Scott Sharkey Wetland Restoration Contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Scott Sharkey, similar to wetland restoration in Blakely Township, however, it's, it sits atop some of the Blakely ravines on the very western side of, of Blakely Township. The total estimated cost of the project is $34,805. However, only $20,321 will come from the WMO. Once again, the funding, the other major funding source is CRP, which will contribute $12,826 and the landowners themselves will contribute $1,658. The funds similar to the Bulk project would come from the Local General Fund, which has the available balance. And once again, the wetland restorations were deemed a high priority for the WMO. These wetlands were also historically drained by tile and the restoration will, will result in eight wetlands, so eight separate basins. That will come from raking these tile lines and that will result in 4.5 acres. So they're a little bit smaller, but there's a considerable amount more of them. And once again, the contract will be for 15 years. The SWCD did recommend at their September 15th board meeting approval. And once again, staff did recommend approval in the absence of the September WPC meeting. And so therefore this item is just as an informational piece and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ryan on this? Thank you, Ryan, for that information. Looks like that is it for the evening, so we just need a motion to adjourn. And do we have a second?
Second's that.
I'll do a roll. Commissioners, Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinch.
Aye.
Commissioner Veerling. Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil.
Aye.
Commissioner Shea.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. The motion is passed, so we will adjourn the meeting. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.